All right, it's on YouTube.
Well, Michelle, do you feel older?
Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone to the Monday, October 19th, Caucus of the Albany Common Council. For the record, members present. JR, can you hook it up?
Yep, give me a second, sorry. So, present currently are council member Mike O'Brien, Alfredo Ballerin, Jenny Farrell, Jack Flynn, Joe Igo, Richard Conti, Sonia Frederick, Tom Hawey, Council President Ellis from the staff, and is Daniel Gillespie, City Clerk, Michel Andre, Senior Legislative Aid, and Corporation Counsel Brett Williams.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Just jumping right into the agenda. Can you all hear me? Okay?
And yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, quick question, is this streaming?
Yes, on YouTube.
Oh, it's on YouTube, okay. I'm looking on Facebook, it's not there.
I'm working on posting that right now.
All right.
I hear a radio or something in the background. Is there a radio on, or?
Not me.
Okay.
Did it go off now? I think it was me. Thanks, thanks, Tom. Okay, so just jumping into the agenda. First, we have the two public hearings, the hearing for the 2021 proposed budget and Mr. Hawey's ordinance 179120. We're going to take Mr. Hawey's ordinance first, because I think, do we have, Danielle, do we have folks here with us for the budget? To comment on the budget?
All of the public comment are specific to Hawey's ordinance.
Oh, okay, so it didn't matter either way, but we'll, we'll take Tom's ordinance first. Okay. And as all of the the things that we need to take care of are buttoned up, the county planning, planning board was all taken care of, we'll be, we'll be moving that tonight. I'll make a motion to discharge it from the planning committee and we'll, we'll vote on it. So, that's that. Meeting minutes, prior meeting minutes, the October 5th meeting minutes I'll be offering for passage. So, moving on down, local laws are held. Under ordinance is introduced, mine 2610220, it's the ordinance for the easement at 75 Livingston Avenue to build the ADA compliant ramp. That'll be going to finance. Then, I'll group together. The bonding ordinances are 2710220 through 4110220. And those will be going to finance also.
Kelly, just to clarify, strictly speaking, I guess 2710220 isn't a bond ordinance?
Excuse, that's, I'm sorry, that's again my fault, it's, it's the budget ordinance, excuse me. All right, so it's 2810220 to 4110220, 27 is actually the budget ordinance. Thank you for that, Brett.
You can still introduce them as a, as a group.
Okay, we'll do that.
Although Danielle still has to read out every title.
Yes, which was, that is the plan. So she's been working her voice and getting ready for it.
A different voice for each one.
That's right. Okay, so that skips us through the the ordinances, onto ordinances held. Well, Mr. Anani's not, not here, but he requested that his item number 10, which is ordinance 1470220, be brought up for a vote tonight, so we'll be voting on that. And next, item 13, under ordinance is held, Mr. Hawey's ordinance, which again, I'll motion to discharge it from committee and we, and then we'll, we can vote on that. All right. Rest of the ordinance is held, then onto resolutions introduced. Again, Resolution 910220, budget resolution will be going to finance, Ms. Farrell. Then, Resolution 91, Mr. Anani and myself, Free Speech Week in the City of Albany, October 25th. So for resolutions 91, 92, and 94, we're all, everyone wanted to be co-sponsors on those, correct? From, okay, for that, okay, for, and also 93, reappointing Ms. Vivas to the Community Police Review Board. Again, we're not going to call her in, she was recently with us and we selected her, so all members want to co-sponsor that, it's a good, good choice, good. Right, right, she's a, she's a good choice for us, so. Anyone not want to be a co-sponsor? Okay, we're all co-sponsors on that. And then-
The resolutions, which are like proclaiming a day or commemorative or whatever, can they be all voice vote?
Yeah, that's kind of the idea of why I'm trying to, okay? Corey, will you, excuse me, President, Mr. President, okay, and so that's down to resolution introduced 9510220, it's Mr. Anani's Resolution Support of City Making Election Day a Paid Holiday, we're going to send that to finance.
What number is that, is that 95?
95102, yep, 20. Okay. And back to the groupings. Resolution 9610220 and Resolution 1010220, they're all capital reserve resolutions, and they'll be going to finance.
Are you introducing those or with Ms. Farrell?
Ms. Farrell, Ms. Farrell. Okay, and then next.
Can we also introduce those as a group?
See resolutions?
96 through 100?
Yeah, that's, I, yeah, I just said that, thank you.
Sorry, in here.
Okay, and next, we have an NMC by Mr. Ballerin and Mr. O'Brien, it's 10110220. And Mr. Ballerin, you care to just give us the, you know, the quick skinny on what's going on with that, the polling locations?
Sure, the one of our polling locations was able to host this year because of COVID and because they needed to use their gym for classroom space. So, the Board of Election had to move several districts to different locations. The only one that were given pushback to is one that they put in Colony, where they are asking our residents to walk across the Everett Road Bridge into those two very heavily trafficked intersections. We think that's unacceptable. We want to make sure that we've already found two other location, alternative locations that could host. The Housing Authority has allowed and is willing to host at Westview. They have a community room that is in front of their main building that has two main entrances through the Central Avenue, facing Central Avenue, that would be a good alternative. And it would also benefit the residents that live in that building, but as well, it is also very walkable to the other three, to the three districts that are affected. In addition, we've also secured a location at the ice skating rink through the city. So, the Board of Election has two alternative locations now to select from that maybe they didn't have in the past, or maybe they, you know, didn't, didn't know who to reach out to. But, well, we've made a lot of, a lot of contacts to the Board of Election last week, and I know a lot of people have called in today. You know, I was hoping we'd get this resolved before this evening. But we haven't. So, I wanted, myself, Mike, and I know others that have been involved in this, wanted to make sure that there was a statement made by the council as we continue to push for this change. Any questions?
Yeah, so when when did the board make the change, or when was the board aware that the prior location was not available and they had to make this change?
I think a few weeks ago, they were made aware of it.
I think even longer. I think as soon as, as soon as in August, when school was starting back at Blessed Sacrament.
So, the postcard mailing that they send out notifying everybody of their locations had the old location on it?
No, it has a new location of four Everett Road.
Okay.
And, and that's, you know, part of our frustration is that we found two alternative locations within 48 hours of us being aware of this location. So, you know, they're all alternative locations than asking seniors and residents to walk across, you know, Everett Road, you know, to Colony.
And have they had any reaction to the alternatives that you've suggested?
Yeah, negative.
Well, I guess.
Too much work.
Right, and, and just so you know, those, those alternatives are offered in a timely manner back in the beginning, but they, the board still chose after, after being offered Westview Homes and in-
Swinburne Park Skating.
Well, did, did, did they give a reason for, I'm just curious, did they give a reason for not choosing those, or just this seems so inconvenient?
Well, no, they really didn't, other than that, well, it's awfully late, but it's not really not awfully late to make the change. And Westview has been used before, so it's a workable location and I don't, and I assume, I don't think the skating rink has ever been used before, but it's a workable location.
Yes.
From the very start, though, why didn't they look at those locations?
Well, what happened was back in the prime, Westview had some COVID concerns, but they've, but they've resolved those. So, it's a totally different situation now than it was back in June. And Westview is more than willing to hold still. And Blessed Sacrament had to, because they have to spread their classes out, is using the gymnasium as some alternative learning space, so they, they, they couldn't, but Westview's really West, Westview has solved the problem in terms of accommodating more than one election district.
Richard, to answer your question, Alfredo? Yeah, I got notified September 15th that Blessed Sacrament, so Richard, it was after their, the cards went out, so September 15th is when Blessed Sacrament notified the board that they couldn't use it. The first place the board went to was the Polish Community Center, which is right down the road on Commerce, and they said no, so that's when I guess they had to go look at Zogopost, but they're, they're still in violation of election law, you're not supposed to have bars outside of municipality in Zogopost, in Colony clearly.
To add just two points, one, you know, Westview, I did a walkthrough with the Housing Authority of Westview, and they showed me how they cleared out the room and how they can structure it so that anyone who's from the outside of their location can come in and out by using those two main entrance entrances. And the way their community room is structured is in front of the building, so really, people don't have to go and interact within the building to go vote. Also, in the current situation that we're, we're in, you know, to call pool people is a dangerous thing to do. I mean, you wouldn't want to have more than one person at a time, so you really want to make sure we have a more walkable, you know, voting pool than, you know, for Everett Road. You know, and, and when you think about people who have mobile limitations, you know, if you've ever walked on Everett Road, if you've ever jogged on Everett Road, imagine trying to do that in a wheelchair. Imagine trying to get through those two entrances in a wheelchair. So, it was at the Bay location, we're asking them to, you know, we found two alternatives for them. So, we're just asking them to do the right thing and find, select a location that's more accessible to our residents.
Now, just to be clear, the residents of the tower there, they vote in the same building?
And not anymore, no, they, they voted the last time at Blessed Sacrament.
No, but I mean-
Because of the COVID-
This time, they'll be back voting now.
Some of the COVID concerns, so all the elderly residents of Westview are now supposed to go over to Zogopost, including areas, at least probably a 10-block radius.
My question is, the Westview people, if you get that, that district moved back to there, that's the people that live in there, it includes them, correct?
Yes, it does.
Yes, yes. But right now, currently, they, those residents, those seniors would have to walk Central Avenue, down Everett Road.
I've done that, and it's a difficult walk, and it's a scary walk with the trucks and traffic too, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and so that's what the, the NMC resolution is for. Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Okay, so that's it for our our agenda.
Can we be co-sponsors on that resolution? Does everybody want to co-sponsor it? I'll be jumping in.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello?
Oh, Ms., Ms. Love? Are you saying, yes, yeah, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
We can't see you now, Joyce. Go ahead, we'll see while we're trying to get her.
No, but my question was more so, I was going to ask him if he spoke to the commissioners over there at Board of Elections, and also why we couldn't write a letter instead of doing a resolution. That's just my, my two, my two questions.
We did speak with the commissioners or with the Democratic Commissioner on Thursday. I personally went and met with the Commissioner, and he was gracious and gave me a good half hour of his time. Pleasant conversation. I, you know, we, I followed up on Friday, and, you know, I made him aware of the additional location, because I got the green light for the ice skating rink on Friday morning. So, you know, he said he was going to check with his counterpart and get back to me. You know, he hasn't gotten back to me, so we decided to put forward this resolution to show as a group what, what the city's council's concerns are, with the idea of having their residents go to a different municipality to have to vote. So, that's why we decided to do it as a resolution.
Yeah, and, and just, go ahead, go ahead, Joyce.
Yeah, because I'm not, Councilman Robinson, they had some of his polling sites on the Everett Road, but he, he went and had a gracious conversation with Klein, and they, they moved his, they decided not to move it there, so he's sharing a polling site with me on Robin Street. I mean, we didn't have to put a resolution, we just asked him, and he granted it. Well, we got together with the two ward leaders and Klein and Granger just granted it, so I, I don't know what the problem is.
I don't know either. I wish they would have just granted it. Yeah. I wish they, I, I mean, I was, they granted it even, you know, as some, some, some that have been involved in this process. You know, I was hoping they would grant it before 5 o'clock, so we will need-
Okay.
You know.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. And I would also just say further with everything that's going on in the country and all the issues folks are having around voting, we're close to the election. I think this would be more effective than the, the writing of the letter. I mean, we're, we're making a point here that we're not okay with this. Oops, no one, no one has anything, everyone's ready to get going.
So, the Lakers?
Yes, but, um, I mean, I can't help but express concern for some of the recent gun violence incidents, and I'm not sure where we're going, but I just a little frustrating.
Yes, and, and I agree, I seem to keep, be having the, the same conversations over and over with with our police. Again, it's, it were, it's a crazy time and, and it's, it's a year like none I've ever seen from a, a law enforcement standpoint. It's, it is troubling.
Can I ask if the members, where the, those incidents occurred in their wards, if the chief or the department reached out to you in terms of the, the incident and anything?
Sorry, Richard, can you repeat? I'm sorry, Rich, I didn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, the question was in terms of the, the recent gun violence incidents and, I guess, all of them. Has, has there been any policy or procedure where the chief or someone from the department would reach out to those council members in whose wards those incidents occurred?
Um, just from our personal, or just from experience, the chief wasn't reaching out for a little while, but he has stopped doing that. I'm not sure of the reason as to why. Normally, I hear from a constituent first, or the news first on what I've heard, so, and this is a policy that we've been trying to, you know, get him to, you know, put into habitual practice, but, you know, it's kind of spotty.
Right.
That's something that we've talked about in leadership, Richard, too, because I've had different issues in my ward and, and I haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah, I mean, not just on this, but this is a serious issue. I've had other issues outside of gun violence.
Sorry. No, mine was gun violence, so that was, that was specifically, I feel like if there's gun violence, then the council member should be obviously not immediately, because they should take care of policing, but if there's any sort of gun violence or I would say murder, that does not involve a gun, the council member should be notified right away.
I also had a gun violence incident in my ward about three blocks from my house. And found out about it through constituents.
Well, actually, same here, because I had nothing of the magnitude that has occurred in other parts of the city, but I have had I think an incident or two as well.
I have one of those ring doorbells, and I get notified whenever there's a shooting. I mean, I knew about all these shootings, like within minutes, I get a-
Really?
Text alert, yes.
Yeah, with those ring doorbell, you, you're kind of a, a part of a neighborhood network, and you get notifications along with that. So, I mean, I have to revisit the, the notification conversation with the chief. He was, again, like Mr. Robinson said, he was pretty spot on. And, I, I mean, I, I do think he should be getting ahold of us as, as soon as he possibly can. I mean, I, obviously, he's not going to give us every detail of what happened, but certainly, I mean, I don't know about you all, but stuff happens, and I started getting calls right away. And it, in, in my conversations with him, in all of our conversations with him, it was that, you know, folks start calling us, they look for direction, they want to know what's going on. We don't have to tell them everything, but some information would be helpful, and for a while, he was pretty good about it.
I want to say that I would also be fine with a deputy calling me.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's fine.
Just need the notification, right, absolutely, just the notification.
And I, I think maybe when you have that conversation about the notifications, you know, to make that clear, at least for me, that's, you know, I don't know how other common council members feel.
Mr. Johnson has his hand ringed.
I'd just say, he hasn't been consistent. There, there has been times he has informed me of what is going on, but I will say that any time that I've reached out to him, he, he's followed up on, you know, making sure that I got caught up on it, so. You know, it would be nice to hear, but, you know, the magnitude of the stuff that's going on, you know, I guess sometimes I can understand. You know, when you have three or four incidents back to back.
Ms. Frederick?
Yeah, just one comment, I don't know if it's correlated, I, I agree, it's spotty in terms of messaging, but I noticed that violence that took place more towards the evening and nighttime, early morning, potentially, those specifically, I didn't get notified on, so maybe there's a a disconnect about reaching out to us during those hours, but I would definitely be open to, you know, getting a text or call at that time, so.
One bit of good news is I heard the US Attorney is looking into where the guns are coming from. It was last week, there was a news conference, so I'm glad the feds are finally involved in looking into where these guns are coming from.
Yeah, that is good. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. President, for the, for our meeting.
Okay, in one minute, we'll start.
Yep, okay.
It's now 7 o'clock. Welcome to our October 19th, 2020 Common Council meeting. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that, yes, President, if all members can unmute themselves so that they can respond to their names. Anani?
Yes, President.
Ballerin?
Yeah.
Conti?
Present.
Dosha?
Present.
AB?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Frederick?
Here.
Hawey?
Here.
Igo?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kimbra?
Here.
Love?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Robinson?
Present.
15 members present, no one is absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you put up the flag so we can do the pledge allegiance, and then right after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have our moment of silence?
I apologize for the delay, I'm having technical difficulties today.
We'll give it a couple, we'll give it a few seconds. If not, we'll pledge allegiance to Mr. Hawey's flag that he has behind him. Thank you, Tom. Don't worry about it. We'll pledge allegiance to Mr. Hawey's flag. Council members, please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now continuing on to our, our agenda for tonight, we have two public hearing on the agenda for tonight. And so we'll have. We will have our clerk read the first ordinance for public hearing number one.
So that is for ordinance seventeen ninety-one twenty and ordinance amending section three seventy-five five of chapter three seventy-five. Of the code of the city of Albany.
Thank you. And during this public comment, public hearing, excuse me, speakers have as much time as they wish to comment on this public hearing. Speakers can only comment on this ordinance that is in front of us, no, nothing else. And after that, the speaker can be questioned, unlike public comment, common council members can ask the speakers questions after. They comment. So with that being said, can a clerk please call the first speaker? We have one.
First public speaker is Diane Campion. And if you bear with me one second.
Thank you. It's Campion. We see you. Just unmute yourself. There you go. Ms. Campion, this is Common Council President Corielis. How are you doing this evening? Oh. Just in and out. Can you unmute yourself, ma'am, again? There you go. Good evening. Can you just state your name and address for the record? You are in a public comment section, the comment on the ordinance, and that's the only thing you can comment on. And after that, unlike public comment period during a public hearing, council members can question you. About your statements after you are finished, if they choose to do so, only in public hearing. So go ahead. We can't hear you. Might need to turn up your volume. Can anyone? I can't hear Ms. Campion. Can anyone hear? No, me neither.
So, Mr. President, I can move on to the next speaker if you'd like, and we can try and call Ms. Campion to see.
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Campion, just work out your kinks and we have another speaker and we'll come back to you.
The next speaker is Janan Gregory.
Hello, Ms. Gregory. This is Common Council President Corielis. You are entered into our public hearing. You have to. You have to state your name and address for the record. Only you can comment on this ordinance that is in front of us right now. And after that, unlike public comment period, council members can ask you questions during a public hearing. So with that being said, Ms. Gregory, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Janan Gregory. I live at one Sandalwood Court in Albany, one two two zero eight in the New Scotland Woods Development. For review for point of record, since we were invited to speak in regards to this, can someone restate the. Ordinance that we're commenting on?
Yes, can a clerk please read the ordinance?
Sorry about that. I was getting this Campion. Ordinance is seventeen ninety-one twenty. And it is. I'm sorry. Did you hear me read the ordinance?
I heard you mention the name, the number of the ordinance. I didn't hear you read. The reference, sorry.
An ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five five of chapter three seventy-five of the code of the city of Albany.
Okay, okay. So we were, myself and Ms. Campion, we were asked to comment regarding recent development in our subdivision. And the. The way it pertains to the USDO and the application process. So I'm not sure if.
Oh, no, that then you.
Right place.
You're probably a public comment, yes. So this is different. This is on this ordinance that's in front of us. You probably are want to speak during public comment.
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll just come back when public comment period start. We'll have you back on.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
So Ms. Campion, because she's a part of the comment with Janan Gregory, we'll hold on to her. I do have her on. We'll be ready to speak when we get to that portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
The next person that signed up is Lee York, but this is specific to zoning designations of New Scotland Woods. And that's specific to USD seventeen ninety-one twenty. The next series of comments are written comments, and I have about six of those. Would you like me to move on to those? I do also.
Are they written for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
And then I also want to note that we have Jeffrey Mayo and Paul Lamar, and they didn't specifically indicate if their comments were for seventeen ninety-one twenty. Which is the ordinance for the public hearing. So would you like me to read these comments and then go back to them?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. So we have a comment from Juliet Turner, an Albany resident, five Tudor Road. As an Albany resident, I'm writing to express my strong support for the amendments to chapter three seventy-five of the USDO proposed by council members Tom Howie and Michael Brian. These changes would ensure a more transparent and equitable planning process to the eventual advantage of both the city and its residents. The changes have been considered over a period of time and their implementation is long due. The next comment is from Nancy Harrigan. Prior to anticipated action by the Common Council on proposed USDO amendment. I want to confirm my support for those changes. I think the amendments are an important, even crucial step to help ensure actions by public officials, developers. And Albany citizens are in line with the sensible development standards in the USDO. They also help better assure that conditions placed on approvals of development proposals by the planning board are followed. This is very important, given the high stakes for all parties involved in land use decisions in Albany. Where so many are affected, sometimes adversely, by what is decided for the benefit of a few. Moreover, given the inevitable changes in administrators and personnel over time. These measures also wisely set clearer parameters for future decision makers. Thanks again for all of all you do and have done, and thanks as well to the common council members. Who have remembered the interests of residents in these matters. I look forward to learning the, the measures. Has been adopted and signed into law. Best wishes, Nancy S. Harrigan. Next comment is from Peter Constant, Constantakis of six Tudor Road. Ordinance seventeen ninety-one twenty for council, for council members Tom Howie and Michael O'Brien to amend chapter three seventy-five. Of the dear planning board members, there is no doubt that the planning board serves a vital purpose. It is critical that proposed projects meet key criteria that will benefit the community or at the very least not harm the neighborhoods. Businesses and families in the city of Albany. I am pleased the board approved the proposal and asked the council to do the same. Below are the comments I submitted to the board. I am also sharing this with the council, so they too will be able to consider my view. And my wife's regarding this important issue. Thank you for considering these comments as you address this important issue. And reading the proposed changes to the USDO, two words immediately come to mind, common sense. I would and do struggle to understand why there could be any more possible opposition to Councilmember Howie's proposal. To require an applicant to clearly state what change they are requesting and why they are requesting that change. And I also believe that. The requirement is not only important for the board in making its decision, it is also the only way to ensure the community is properly informed about the project. And was not misled. Residents have a right to know complete details about a project that could potentially impact their neighborhood. And possibly their future as well as our city. Open government is the only way to ensure that. So I believe transparency is essential for all parties, including the board. I further support other measures in the proposed changes to the USDO process that take a broad view of a project's benefits. Or lack thereof for the community and ensure that no project work is authorized until all permit conditions are satisfied. Having grown up in the city of Troy, I personally witnessed the destruction of an existing vibrant downtown, including the relocation exodus. And closing of prosperous businesses in the nineteen seventies. Only to see the proposed mall that would save the city become a multi-year ditch. This eyesore not only caused and exacerbated the city's serious financial problems, but also widespread ridicule of the city. Due to its lack of oversight and its willingness to move ahead prematurely. Note that it took downtown Troy to close to half a century to regain the vibrancy it had squandered. The proposed USDO changes proposed by Councilman Howie will serve as security for Albany residents regarding new development. And will not impose any undue hardships on developers. Each project will still be reviewed for its merits and potential detriments. And I trust the planning board will make its decisions based on the facts and for the benefit of our city. These days, it seems like common sense is often neglected. Here's a chance to use it to ensure a strong viable future for our city. Thank you. The next comment that we received is from Stephen Burke, who shares the following. Please accept my comments and enter them in the record in the matter of ordinance number seventeen ninety-one twenty concerning the amendment of the USDO. At the meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty, your consideration in this matter is greatly appreciated. I support the passage of this ordinance, addition, definition regarding planning board requirements for the issuance of waivers. Along with the mandatory inclusion of all specific conditions presented to planning board by the chief building officer. Or that the chief planning officer properly considers and acts on development conditions recommended by the. Involved city departments to support the best interests of the city residents and applicable construction and development standards. Thank you. And that was submitted by Stephen Burke. The next comment is from Elizabeth Barbarian. I'm a thirty-nine-year resident of Albany. I have lived at twenty-five Clarendon Road in Eagle Hill since two thousand and two. I strongly support proposal seventeen ninety-one twenty from Tom Howie and Michael Brian to amend chapter three seventy-five of the USDO. The USDO was created in two thousand and seventeen as the roadmap for development in the city of Albany. I believe that now, more than ever in these uncertain times, the USDO must be a living document that can be easily updated as times and circumstances change. And when facts which support its revisions are presented. We have become painfully aware of the extreme relevance and importance of this flexibility as we endure the pandemic and its unknown aftermath. Which may have significant ramifications on citizens' lifestyle choices. Thank you for your support of this amendment. And then would you like me to check in with the three participants that are waiting in the waiting room? Or do you want me to read the letter submitted to the council by attorney Amy Levine, Assistant Corporation Counsel?
Are the people in the queue for public com, I mean, public hearing? Do you know?
Can't tell yet because they didn't indicate the topics that they wish to speak on.
Okay.
If you want.
Let's just check. Let's check.
So I'll let Mr. Mayo in first and we can ask him if his comments are specific to seventeen ninety-one twenty, which is the ordinance for tonight's public hearing.
I, I won't be speaking tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it's not relevant. But seventeen ninety-one.
We have a call Lamar.
To amend three seventy-five, chapter five, which is literally the thing that we're all dealt.
It looks like that background noise was coming from Diane Campion.
Yeah, she muted herself.
Mr. Lamar, we'd like you to see if you are here to give comments regarding seventeen ninety-one twenty, which is the ordinance for tonight's public hearing? Or you want to speak regarding something else?
It was something else, something very specific about two buildings on Washington Avenue, not, not the current one. Thank you.
One second.
I'll be doing public comment. Thank you.
And I believe Lee York's comments have something to do with New Scotland.
Okay.
So do you want to, want me to share for the record the letter that Amy Levine, Assistant Corporation Counsel submitted?
Did council members have that letter?
Yes, that letter has been sent to all council members.
Will council members like to hear it? I mean, I don't know if sometimes you all read it. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know. I think, I think Amy just sent that around. I don't know that she intended for that to be read.
Okay.
So that's everyone that I had that provided a public comment for tonight's public hearing regarding seventeen ninety-one twenty.
So since we have no one in the queue waiting to speak on this ordinance, and we have no more comments to be read. We deem this public, public hearing closed at this time. And we'll move on to our second public hearing. Madam Chair, can you please read?
The second public hearing is for the city of Albany, twenty twenty-one proposed budget. And no one has indicated that they want to speak or provided any written comments regarding the public hearing for the twenty twenty-one proposed budget.
And okay, so the people, there was no new person came in a queue. Those in a queue have already expressed they would like to speak during public comment period. So seeing that we have no one in the queue and no public comments to be read on the twenty twenty budget. We will deem this public comment, this public hearing closed as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. And now we're moving on to. Public comment period. And during this period, each individual have five minutes to speak upon any matter they choose to speak upon this evening. You have five minutes. After that, unlike public hearing, council members cannot ask you questions or answer you. If they choose to do so, they will do so at a later time during the agenda on the meeting. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first speaker? Can each speaker just state their name and address for the record? Go right ahead.
So I am going to see if we still have Janan.
Diane Campion on. Can you call her?
I have to call her back unless her.
She's there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. My name is Diane Campion, and I live at sixty-nine Woodside Drive in New Scotland Woods. New Scotland Woods is way out New Scotland Avenue, not far from the city limits and behind Holy Names Academy. Most people in Albany don't even know that we exist out here. I'm here this evening to speak to a residential construction mess that we have as a result of the USDO. The decision-making process of the planning department and the city's overall approach to our type of community lying within the city. We need to fix the USDO to redefine residential townhouse, clearly define major versus minor development. Commit to adherence to all. development, commit to adherence to all neighborhood covenants, and finally, to force adherence to it by the Planning and Development Department. Our townhouse development has existed since nineteen eighty-eight. It consists of a series of structures that house three to four townhouse units with garages, some having basements. They look almost like large, single-family dwellings of a cottage style. We own our property as well as the structures and pay taxes accordingly. Most importantly, we have a covenant that was created and filed with Albany County in nineteen eighty-eight. We have no streetlights or sidewalks in our development, and we maintain common areas via voluntary contributions. We maintain our own properties in accordance with the covenant and call upon the city occasionally to enforce its codes with regard to appearance, usually in the case of rental properties. About a year and a half ago, residents started to notice activity on a tiny and extremely shallow piece of land on Woodside Drive. That parcel had been widely known as unbuildable by residents because it was described to us that this development had been built out. Additionally, that parcel contains the only sizable hill, about twenty feet high, in the development and backs up to New York Route eighty-five and the town of Bethlehem. Subsequently, I found that several residents had called the city asking what was going on. Most didn't receive return calls, but the few that did were informed that indeed something was going on, and residents would have would receive a notice by mail of the plans that had been submitted to the planning department. Ultimately, there was no notice. Instead, several months later, heavy equipment appeared on the lot, excavation began, and they vertically sheared off the hill that backs up to Route eighty-five and also has at its top a chain-link fence installed by the state. The top of the hill is heavily wooded with huge trees that come right up to the fence at the crest of the hill. More calls to the city were made with little response, to my knowledge. Instruction continued of a structure that was clearly and dramatically out of compliance with the New Scotland Woods covenant. At first, it looked as if the structure would be an office building, but we came to learn that was that it was a two-unit townhouse building, much taller than existing homes and built less than four feet from the nearest neighbor and just ten feet from their front steps. I got involved when it became common knowledge that the builder intended to build two to three more units on this tiny piece of land. We only became aware of this plan because the builder told multiple residents of his plans and that he had been able to pull it off because he, quote, "knew people in the city," a theme that continues to shake the confidence of all of us in the official decision-making process. There are others who have spoken, or will speak later tonight more knowledgeably than I, to the glaring engineering as well as planning and oversight deficiencies in this development effort. Allow me to enumerate. The developer clearly went to the planning board with intent to segment the property in order to circumvent the review process as well as USDO guidelines and was successful in doing so. Other review steps were ignored as well, based on proximity to the New York State as well as town of Bethlehem property lines, and we, the residents of New Scotland Woods, were afforded no input. Design plans submitted and approved by the city were not adhered to in the actual construction, i.e., as we understand it, the building was designed to include basements, but has been constructed--
One minute remaining.
Okay. The retaining wall was constructed to prevent the hill from falling down, and it's inadequate and inconsistent with the design. New Scotland Woods is built on clay. There is no drainage. We, the mayor, had visited us about a year ago to see the significant erosion problems that exist in this development currently. And during the entirety of last winter during this construction, our street was rife with mud and water and ice, and the mailboxes were blocked, and we had to pick up mail for the older residents here. Now thankfully, the mayor's office has sustained our claims that the appropriate processes were circumvented, but we are fearful that the builder is going to do an end run around that ruling and really achieve his goal of placing additional units on that piece of property. The USDO has proved inadequate to address the situation, and there are property lines and spacing concerns--
Miss Campion--
--on that piece of property that are totally inconsistent with what exists in Scotland Woods.
Thank you. Five minutes. So thank you so much for your comments. Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Janan Gregory.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janan Gregory. I live at one Sandalwood Court, also in New Scotland Woods. I wanted to start quickly by appreciating the opportunity to speak, thanking council members, the mayor's chief staff, Dave Gallin, who's been helpful with this process for us, and also Councilman Jack Flynn, that invited us here this evening. As you guys have heard previously, and I'm sure there's been plenty of meetings that we've missed in regards to some of the loopholes in the planning system with regards to the USDO. Their overall theme seems to underline compatibility with existing structures and existing neighborhoods, but yet in the application process for that the planning board and the planning committee members review, there's a lot of loopholes where some simple changes could be made to the forms even prior to major zoning amendments can be considered. The master application seems to be the starting point for a lot of these, a lot of these developments. There's no place to indicate that construction is being considered in a development community, in an existing development. Here in New Scotland Woods, we're one of very few townhouse developments within the city of Albany. Whitehall Station is one. There's one on near Memorial Hospital, Adrian Lane, there's Willen Lane. Point of Woods probably comes to mind more readily to the average person in government and in the city of Albany. So in the master application, there's really no place to indicate that this is a proposed construction within an existing development, possibly because there are so few in the city. The next section is a developmental plan application, and again, there's really nowhere in there that indicates this intent of construction. It could be considered to include a street photo in alignment with just an existing photo, and it may be a place to consider including a rendering of the building. The lot modification application also talks about land subdivisions and lot lines, any existence of liens, mortgages, those sorts. Doesn't include anything that would uncover or even ask the question, is there a covenant? Is there an HOA? You know, our development doesn't have an HOA, and I believe the only one in the city of Albany that does is the Whitehall Station. And all lots should be discussed. If they're proposing a three-unit subdivision and they're only talking about what they're doing on the two, I think it should raise a red flag of what's going on in the third. In the project narratives, there is a section that does include that the proposed structure should be in harmony with current development. This project narrative did actually say New Scotland Woods subdivision was created in nineteen eighty-seven, and were, they were planning, I'm putting this here, there were existing townhomes to the east and west of this proposed parcel. But I guess the address Woodside Drive didn't ring a bell to the three different hands and planning committee people that it passed. There's a certificate of appropriateness, and it looks like the way everything's structured that that's only really needed and used in historic districts, but it might be considered in the future that it also applied to construction within an existing development. Or an even simpler workaround to include these types of conditions might include that any construction proposed in an existing subdivision and/or known development, especially ones that have names that have been around for thirty years, that that not be considered a minor project, and that anything that's not minor is a major project and then would trigger actual review by the planning board. All of these checkboxes so far kind of superseded and looped around the actual planning board process, so no one had a chance to review it other than a few people, and it seemed to be directed a little bit subversively around those people, so there wasn't continuity. And I can't blame the reviewers for not seeing things that aren't even in checkboxes in terms of this development.
One minute remaining, Ms. Gregory.
So I think, again, the consideration of modification of the system in regards to existing construction within existing developments be considered major and have the planning board approval for any future. And again, I thank you guys for letting us say a few words.
Now, thank you, Ms. Gregory, for being here. Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Lee York.
Mr. York, you're not on, unmute yourself, sir? Hello, Mr. York. This is Common Council President Cori Ellis. You have five minutes to speak upon any subject you wish, and before you begin, please state your name and address for the record.
Can you all hear me?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Ms. York, yes, go right ahead.
My name is Lee York, and I live at twenty-eight Home Avenue in Albany. I'm a retired professional planner, and I have been working with the residents of New Scotland Woods on zoning issues in their neighborhood. As you have heard, there was an approval for a three-lot subdivision in New Scotland Woods with disastrous results. The basic problem was that the zoning designation had changed in the USDO in April of two thousand seventeen. The zoning of New Scotland Woods and other townhouse developments in the city were lumped together into one zoning category. The RT zone allows commercial uses on the first floor, eighteen, lot widths of eighteen feet, no side or front yard minimums, with structures primarily being within the historic districts. This describes downtown structures within the central city, which are within walking distance of services, parks, banks, and shopping. This in no way describes New Scotland Woods, in which the units have front, side, and backyards with two-car garages and substantial open space located in a wooded area on the outskirts of the city. Because of the zoning change, Lot fifty-four was subdivided into three parcels, Lot A, B, and C. Lots A and B were developed into two townhouses, which were approved without any questions about what was planned for Lot C. The application did not indicate that the townhouses would be in keeping with a cottage-style townhouse design of New Scotland Woods, and they weren't. The erroneous TR zoning allowed for a potential of five units to be built on a spit of land abutting the town of Bethlehem and New York State. The hill, which is at least ten foot high and higher on the property, if removed to allow more development, will undercut the New York State property and certainly impact it. The applicant has now withdrawn his application to construct the additional three lots on, or three units on Lot C, since it is a clear attempt not only to circumvent the USDO, but also the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SEACR. If there's any question about the development which has occurred on lots fifty-four A and B, I urge council members to just take a drive out into New Scotland Woods and see for themselves. I will not belabor the situation any further nor take any more of your valuable time. What I'm requesting is that the council pass a resolution this evening to return the zoning of New Scotland Woods and any other townhouse developments outside the inner city to their pre-two thousand seventeen zoning designation. The subdivision regulations currently still refer to residential cluster subdivisions under which New Scotland Wood was initially reviewed. So it may be as easy as using the former definition for these townhouse developments and marking the zoning map as to whether they, where they exist. In conclusion, I just want the council to know that if nothing is done to modify the zoning on the townhouse developments outside the inner city or to return them to pre-two thousand seventeen, their pre, excuse me, pre-two thousand seventeen designation, this issue will not go away. Every time that a formerly substandard lot is developed under the RT zone, more residents will be coming before you to request a change and asking you to help them in maintaining their property values. Once again, I ask you to pass a resolution returning New Scotland Woods subdivision and any other of a similar nature to their pre-two thousand seventeen designation. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and for your time.
Thank you, Ms. York, for being here. Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Paul Lamar.
My name is Paul Lamar, and my husband and I, Mark Eimer, live at one forty-three Rosemont Street in Albany. Last, at the beginning of twenty twenty, Stewarts came before the planning board proposing to build a hypermart on the corner of Calvin Avenue and Washington Avenue. And for the last, I would say, five or six months, we actively worked against what we considered this to be a hugely outsized project. And in August, August twenty-fifth specifically, the planning board rejected the proposal, denying Stewarts the application, three votes against and two abstentions. And of course, we took great comfort in this, that our property behind which Stewarts was about to be built would not be compromised by this outsized project. Last week, we learned that Stewarts is going to present another proposal, basically the same proposal, to the planning board, and thanks to the good leadership of Al DeSalvo, he called them on that last week and said this does not look like anything appreciably different from what they presented before. But there's yet another solution that, to this issue, which may obviate the need to go through the whole process once again, and I thank Mike O'Brien, our councilperson, for bringing it to our attention, and that is the improper rezoning done not intentionally, but just by error, of two houses on Washington Avenue, ten fifty-seven and ten sixty-one Washington Avenue. These two houses would have to be taken down in order for Stewarts to build this hypermart, as well as a, the bank, and also a garage. So Mike very thoughtfully said, this is something that the council, common council, can address, and putting these two residences back in residential qualification as opposed to mixed use. They were inappropriately dubbed mixed use. These are inhabited two-family homes, and the idea that Stewarts would come in and knock them down to create this outsized project was obviously anathema to us, and Michael O'Brien correctly said that there's something that the common council would do. So we ask you to revisit this issue of redesignating these two large homes as residences, which they are, so that Stewarts cannot come in and carve out a large section of that corner of Calvin and Washington and build this huge project. Thanks very much for listening to me tonight, and thank you again, Mike, for your leadership in this, in this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Vincent Raguso.
There you go. Okay.
There you go, buddy.
Vincent Raguso. I did, truthfully, I was going to talk, and then I basically changed my mind, council members, but what I do want to say, I hope this council gets behind Tom Howie and his ordinance and passes this ordinance. It's been going on long enough, and I think it's time that, we all know that Tom Howie's ordinance is what it should be. And again, we've been going back and forth. It has been approved at one time in the council, vetoed by the mayor, and then it went before the planning department, and they tweaked it a little bit. So what you now have in front of me is the tweaked version of Tom Howie's ordinance. So tonight, on a vote, I hope this council stands behind Tom Howie and lets this go through so we can get this out of the way. Thank you very much, council members. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raguso. Good to hear from you. Can the clerk please choose the next speaker?
So, Mr. President, all the speakers have spoken. I have one recorded public comment that I would like to play for council members, if that's okay with you.
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Alana Klein. I reside at twenty-nine Glenwood Street, one-two-two oh eight, not one-two-two oh three. Mr. President and members of the council, I hope you are all staying safe and healthy. I hope you are all staying safe and healthy. I was saddened, was saddened and shocked by what happened on Grand Street last week. I will not go into details about what happened because that situation is apparently resolved. But just know that I believe what the residents are saying, and not the city. It harkens back to the dumpster in Arbor Hill in 2018, except that this was city-funded, except that was city-funded and this was city sanctioned. I would like to offer some suggestions on what might prevent a similar scenario from arising in the future. Permits for events that would cause parking or other similar disruptions must have a lead time of at least seven days. From what I heard, there was at best a two- to three-day notice. There is so much playing in production that goes into a movie or show, they find it hard to believe that they would meet a specific date at a specific time at the event's hour. There should be a requirement that any flyers that are posted be accompanied by a similar flyer in Spanish. Mostly, I would like to focus on an alternative parking area. Not only would I ask that you set up an alternative parking area as close and speedily possible to the area in question and on a major bus line, but I would request that all towing in the future and up at this alternative parking area. This would prevent innocent residents from incurring additional fees for the grave sin of not seeing a flyer. Film production brings attention and tourism to our great city. No one is against that. However, when it causes damages to our residents, they include undue financial burdens and possible mental health risks, among other conveniences. As Mary Joanne Lynam, Lynam and Sam. For these survivors, look up the internet, Black Lives Matter. I saw him late.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Those are all comments.
That the last public comment we have?
Yes, Mr. President, that is the last one.
Okay, seeing there is no other people in the queue and all the public comments to be read, the meeting public comment period this evening closed. And now moving down the agenda, we will move to approval of previous minutes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I offer the meeting minutes from our October 5th of 2020 for passage.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes approved. Moving down on local laws, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. All the local laws on the agenda are held.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Reports of any standing committees? Ms. Farrell?
The Finance Committee has been having a regular meeting this past week. We met on Wednesday and Thursday. Actually, I believe it was just Thursday this past week. We had a light week for the Finance Committee. And the Fire Department and the Police Department came in to discuss their budgets and their capital projects upcoming. We have Wednesday evening. I believe we have planning and codes coming in. And then Thursday, we look forward to speak with DGS about their budgets and their capital program, their capital funds. So I look forward to seeing all of you there. Will be any additional information, Michelle's been sending it out immediately. So we'll do that as soon as we get it to.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. I don't think there's any other. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I mentioned this at our last meeting, but we're getting closer to it. On November 5th, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting to, at 5:30 to take up the police reform legislation. It's local laws, H-I-N-J of 2020. Will be meeting at 5:30 November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Seeing there's no other standing committees reports at this time, we'll move on to ordinances introduced. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 2610220 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance authorizing and directing the grant to General Distilling LLC of an easement in the city of Albany over a portion of the city right-of-way of Livingston Avenue for the construction of an ADA-compliant ramp.
It's Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. It'll be referral to Finance Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on with ordinances introduced, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance numbers 28.102.20 through ordinance 41.102.20 and ask for all of their introductions.
Thank you. And we're going to add to that ordinance 27.10220R as well, through 1.20.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. Madam Chair?
An ordinance.
I'm a clerk.
An ordinance adopting the budget is presented by the mayor on October 1st, 2020 for fiscal year 2021. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $4,281,956 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $4,281,956 of serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $392,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $392,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $285,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $285,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $1,350,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $1,355,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $350,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $350,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $564,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $564,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $350,000 and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of $350,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $255,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $255,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $133,500 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $133,500 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $3,750,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $3,750,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $650,000 and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of $650,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $300,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $300,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $2,850,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $2,850,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $1,900,000 and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $1,900,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. That's all, folks.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Those are referred to Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Sorry. That is done for ordinances introduced. Now we're going to move to ordinances held. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 147220 and asks for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Anani.
As amended.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 313 and 258 of Part 2 of the Code of the City of Albany.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Anani? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. To enhance the quality of life of residents in the city of Albany, this legislation will require Department of General Services to do inspection of properties within three days of receiving a complaint and to raise the penalties to encourage occupants and property owners to maintain their property. Quality of life in the city of Albany has been a primary concern for many residents in our city. As a council member, I want to make a debt in addressing a longstanding quality of life issue. That issue being the need to ensure property owners are taking care of their properties. When property owners decide that they don't want to do work or pay someone to work to improve their property, that impact our neighborhoods. It encourage wild animals, insects, and other pests to take root in the neighborhood. A poorly maintained property drags down the value of surrounding properties, which in turn impacts the tax base. Before it gets to that point, we as a city have to be proactive in making sure property owners are taking care of their buildings and lawns, which is why I introduce this legislation. This legislation will empower Department of General Services to do inspection within three days of a complaint, whether it's on C Click Fix, whether it's a phone call that was to the department. I believe shortening the timeframe for some property owners to address the litter violation and grass overgrowth on their properties would alleviate some of the quality, quality of life issues that many of my residents, many of my constituents, and many residents in the city of Albany faces. Also, this legislation will increase the fines from littering from $500 to $1,000. Littering and lack of lawn care has been a problem in this city for far too long. And as elected officials, we have to act. Enough is enough. I want to thank Department of General Services for supporting this legislation. I want to thank all my colleagues who are on the General Service Committee for voting out with a unanimous consent. And I appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti?
Yes.
Chad?
Did you call me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Glenn?
Glenn, is he there? I don't see him in the queue. I don't see him at all. Contend?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Owee?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
14 in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinances held, Mr. Kimbrough, motion?
Yes, motion to discharge ordinance 179120 from the Planning Committee.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Howey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 179120 and ask for its passage via roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Howey. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Section 375.5 of Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Albany.
Thank you. Any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Howey? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we heard tonight, I mean, we have problems with the USDO and I believe this ordinance is a good step in that we start adjusting the USDO because there has been problems. I've been working on this close to, I want to say, 15, 16 months just to get these changes in. I'm glad that we were able to work something out, but it shouldn't take that amount of time to do any kind of changes. So hopefully, moving forward in the future, we can get more changes done as needed and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howey. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to appreciate, to send some appreciation to Councilmember Howey for working so hard on this. And also, after the original ordinance was vetoed, I appreciate the mayor's office, the Corporation Council's office, and the Planning Department, along with Mr. Howey and several other council members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Conti, and Mr. Kimbrough, coming together and continuing to work on this because Tom's absolutely right. There's a lot of work that still needs to happen with the USDO, but this is some really common sense changes that really need to happen sooner rather than later. So I appreciate the hard work that everybody's put in.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations, Mr. Howey. I'll be voting yes on this. I'll be co-sponsoring. But I just want to note again, as someone who was here in 2017 when the USDO was originally adopted, there was a provision, which we're all aware of, built in, kind of the safeguard for the council to exercise oversight through the six-month review to be followed by annual reviews. Back in 2017, there was a, you can argue, a six-month review was submitted. It was submitted in November with, which mixed policy and technical changes. But the Planning Board was never, ever able to complete action and actually forward a recommendation to us. So that never happened. But the annual review also has additional information that is supposed to enhance our oversight, including the number of variances that were issued, conditional use permits, other types of approvals, et cetera, et cetera, a whole range of things that was supposed to enhance our oversight of how the USDO was operating and also to provide us the opportunity to make adjustments as needed. We have, this council has passed a couple of ordinances, including this one tonight, to make adjustments to the USDO. That was not the way it was supposed to happen. And I think it's frustrating that, in effect, that we're saying, while we're doing this, the Planning Department has been ignoring the requirements of the USDO in terms of their accountability to the council. And, you know, what I fear is, what we slowly see happening is our oversight authority slipping away. And one day, we're going to wake up and say, "What happened to it?" So I think we need to really focus on this issue in terms of getting our oversight back and getting the Planning Department to actually comply with the USDO requirements that were supposed to ensure us the oversight that we were supposed to have. And I think it's really important because, as I say, one day, maybe the next council will realize, but we're going to, we're going to lose our authority. And we don't want that to happen. And that coupled with the failure to submit reappointments to Planning Board Historic Resources and the BCA, where we have members substantially serving expired terms without the council having its oversight authority as far as consent, you know, advising consent authority that some people will remember, Mr. Igo was here in 1998 when we're working on the charter to get that basic confirmation authority in there. And we got it for the Planning Board and the BCA back in 1998. But again, we're losing it. We're losing it. And so as we adopt this tonight, and congratulations, Mr. Howey, and the work, I did a tremendous amount of work and we're very dogging on it and pursuing it. And that's really appreciated. But let's not lose sight of that other issue of some of the oversight authority that we're losing and that we fought for, going back to the charter in 1998. that we're losing and that we fought for, going back to the charter in nineteen ninety-eight. So I will be voting yes and happy to co-sponsor this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. O'Brien? You're muted, Mike. Go unmute yourself. There you go.
I also appreciate the work that Tom did on this. If I could just kind of summarize what I think the significance of it is, it means that every waiver that is granted has to be sought by the applicant, justified by the applicant, justified by the board in granting it, articulated, and it also builds in a appeals process whereby if there is a a party that's aggrieved, they can go to the planning director and if necessary, go go to the BCA for a review of whether the waiver of the condition was appropriately given. And I also echo what Richard has said. I mean, I can think of several situations where, had there really been a six-month review, had there really been an annual review? There are a lot of things that we have put hours and hours and hours of effort into, wouldn't have been necessary, like, for example, the ordinance that Paul Lamar spoke on on public comment tonight. There are two buildings which never were commercial and which were accidentally, in the zoning map, dropped into a mixed-use neighborhood commercial area through pure oversight. And that would have been picked up in the six-month review or in the yearly review instead of having to go through a long and rigorous fight with a corporate giant stewards who basically wanted to change the face, the residential face, of a chunk of Washington Avenue and many others. I mean, the whole language, ironic, Richard said that we have not, that there are many, the majority of the zoning board, the majority of the zoning board who caused us all the trouble with the interpretation of a blood plasma center being a light manufacturing process. The majority of that voting board were past their term, with one individual being two years beyond his term. So there is more than an erosion. I think there's been a usurpation of council power, and I think we have to get on it, and I think this is a step for doing it, and I commend Tom. It was a long fight, but I think it's worth it. And I will certainly be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mrs. Duchesne?
Well, yes, thank you, Tom, for all your work on this, and especially, Mr. Conti, thank you for your astute observations. I second everything that you say with regard to your concerns, and I'll go one step further on that. And that is, I generally have a concern with regard to the Planning Department adhering to the terms of the USDO as adopted, and that was one of the reasons why I had concerns about them, the Planning Board having the authority to waive requirements of that, which was part of what instigated this particular ordinance language. As I was listening to the comments earlier this evening from people in New Scotland Woods, I was wondering if the new development that is being allowed there complies with things such as the thirty percent, the requirement of every new development shall have thirty percent vegetative coverage of a lot. I wonder about whether it complies with the limitations on how many buildings can be built on one particular lot. And also, I note that people were complaining about it being at odds, the approval being at odds with the restrictive covenant, which was also an issue with the New Scotland Avenue development at five sixty-three, New Scotland Avenue. All of those were concerns there, and despite those being raised as legitimate concerns, they've essentially gotten ignored and, you know, unaddressed, and there has been a lot of public comment about that, and that has been disregarded. So I think that while those residents are looking for potential changes to protect them, you know, the question is, how much are any kinds of changes actually going to protect people if there is not strict adherence to the terms of the USDO, which is not only intended to encourage development, but also protect the rights and interests of the landowners in the immediate vicinity, as is the concern now at New Scotland Woods. So I think that there are very significant concerns here that we need to be addressing, and it's very difficult to address when basically people make the comments and then decisions are made that are at variance with the explicit language of the USDO. So thank you. I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Duchesne. Any further discussion? Mr. Nani?
He's muted.
Have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Serving as a councilman, I cannot help but be amazed at the amount of investment that is being made in the city of Albany. For a city that many people, at one time, have dismissed as a city in decline. But over the past couple of years, Albany has attracted firms, developers of all sizes, to see the value of doing business in the capital city. Even with the economic challenges caused by COVID-19, people still want to invest in our city. As a president, however, the economic miracles that Albany is experiencing right now is at risk, not because of a fundamental economic shift, but rather due to the persistent small coalition of residents and organizations who decline, who declare the announcement of any large business or development not in my backyard. We have people who want to build housing and workspaces, willing to contribute to our city tax bases, bring jobs, and this vocal small coalition continues to call for rejection of these projects. The facts are that Albany had seen more traffic on its streets and a larger population in nineteen fifties than it does today. Albany has also held a larger tax base as well. The reality is that large projects are not beyond the capacity of mid-sized city like Albany. If anything, it demonstrates the progress our city is making in the comeback towards post-war peace. Now, look, it's understandable that not every project is a good fit and that there may be some concerns with certain proposals, but that's the reason why we have the planning and the zoning boards as well as other opportunities for the public to comment on all developers soliciting local feedback and ensure that the final product is something that satisfies all community members. If we let this small coalition continue to get in a way of progress, Albany can kiss goodbye the revival and investment it has received. And with that, it could kiss goodbye the associated benefits like expanded tax base, job growth, and increase in availability of housing, particularly affordable housing. While I will be voting in support of this because I realize that, you know, in politics and just government, it's not my way or the highway. You have to work with others, particularly administration and planning board, to come up with a compromise, and this is a compromise that I could support. But I want to urge my colleagues in government and also the fellow residents in the city of Albany to reject the notion that development is bad. It is not. We cannot let the perfect be the enemy of good. If we want to see a brighter future for our city, Albany must welcome development and not stand in the way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes, and co-sponsor, please.
Duchesne.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Frederick.
Yes.
Hoy.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Good job, Tom. Good job. Now, moving on to excuse me, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinance is on the agenda. Help.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions introduced, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed, I noticed resolution ninety-one oh two point twenty R and asks for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to elimination of one full-time position and the other, which will affect the salary total for the 2020 budget.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be referral to finance.
Okey-dokey. Continuing on to resolutions introduced, Mr. Kimbrough?
Mr. Anani, you want to do the honors on these resolutions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution ninety-one one oh two twenty R and asks for its passage on a roll call.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council declaring October nineteenth, twenty twenty through October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty as free speech week in the city of Albany.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none since we're all co-sponsors on this, we will take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, non-opposed? Resolution passes. Continuing, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this resolution ninety-two one oh two twenty R and asks for its passage on a roll call.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution declaring October nineteenth, twenty twenty Community Media Day in the city of Albany.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? This is also co-sponsored by everyone, so we'll take a voice vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution ninety-three one oh two twenty and asks for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council reappointing Nairobi Vives as a member of the Community Police Review Board.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, we're all co-sponsors on this one. Do another voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution, those against? Resolution passes. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this resolution ninety-four one oh two twenty R and asks for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution declaring October twentieth, twenty twenty digital in the city of Albany.
Is there any discussion on the resolution?
I will speak on this one.
Mr. Anani? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. COVID-19 has revealed further inequities in our city, the nation and the world, and has shown just how important the digital knowledge and connectivity is. And during this pandemic, the City School District of Albany measured the digital divide amongst our students to be upwards of forty percent, which has posed a significant challenge. And in this day and age, computers, internet access, and technology training and support programs have become essential to the digital economy. Digital knowledge has become necessary skill in COVID-19 pandemic. For far too long, the people of Albany have been forced to deal with subpar internet service. And in 2020, we have technologically fallen behind a curve. The primary internet provider in Albany is Spectrum Charter, which I like to call them Spectrum Greed. They charge too much and provide too little. And they are being forced out of the state on numerous occasions by the state. Verizon Fios, like other providers, does not provide service to the city, effectively depriving us of market competition that could provide better quality and more affordable service. We rely on internet to look for jobs, to do homework, to attend classes, to request services. Can you turn it down? Include the city services. It becomes clear that everyone needs a home connection. It is essential that twenty-nine percent of current Albany residents do not have the home internet and are left behind simply because they can't afford to pay for an internet connection. Without viable alternatives Can you turn it down? Without viable alternatives, we need to take matters into our own hands to rectify this situation. When the private sector fails to act, government must take action. And this is the most effective way of passing this resolution to encourage and to bring attention to the digital divide that exists, not just in this city, but all across our state. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilmember Kelly Kimbrough for being a prime sponsor on this resolution, and also want to thank all the advocates who are fighting tooth and nail to address the digital divide that exists here in the city of Albany. We will get this right. We are in the 21st century, and we need to make sure that internet is no longer a luxury. It is a necessity, and we must provide it for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, I used to be a telecommunications professor. It's connected to communications, twelve years. I just want to bring up a couple of points. You know, the phone system that was founded back in the eighteen hundreds, it was recognized back then that instead of having little companies compete against each other to have one, like, service provider, but have it, they called it a natural monopoly, where the government would regulate the fees. And, you know, when the Reagan era started in the eighties, all of a sudden, government interference wasn't allowed anymore, and we've seen that we've moved away from regulated type of systems like national grid with electric with the phones because the government told us, well, competition is good, and competition will bring the prices down. And we saw the Bell breakup in the nineteen eighty-four Judge Green decision. That was one of the first iterations of this. I think it's a noble cause to see that we can try to do this, but you have a lot of people out there who believe that big government is not needed, and we don't want big government, and we see this in the election on November third, and that's what this election's about. But, you know, while I support this, Um, but, you know, while I support this, uh, it's going to be very tough. You know, Verizon with the FiOS, they're not expanding the FiOS, and I sent information, I believe, to a young council member that they've already said they don't want to expand FiOS. And the reason is that the people who put in the cabling for FiOS are unioned. They want to go to five G, which is non-unionized. So when you use your cell phone, the people there, the technicians and stuff, don't have a union. But when you pick up your regular phone in your house, or when you use FiOS, if you do have it, those workers are unionized. So this is what, it's a, it's a struggle, but I think there's a good step, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Is there any further discussion? I think we're all co-sponsors on this as well. So this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on to resolutions introduced. Mr. Anani.
Oh, I don't even have that.
Can the clerk read, uh, the resolution, buddy chairs?
Ninety five, one oh two twenty R.
Yep. Can you, clerk, please read the resolution?
Resolution in support of the City making Election Day a paid holiday.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, it'll be referred to finance.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution number ninety six point one zero two point two zero through Resolution number one hundred point one oh two point two zero and ask for their introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolutions?
A resolution of the common council establishing a capital reserve fund to be known as the Urban Planning Fund. A resolution of the common council establishing a capital reserve fund to be known as the Recreation Renovations Fund. A resolution of the common council establishing a capital reserve fund to be known as the General Services Equipment Fund. A resolution of the common council establishing a capital reserve fund to be known as the Information Technology Equipment Fund. A resolution of the common council establishing a capital reserve known as the Police Vehicle and Equipment Reserve Fund.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. They're referred to finance.
Okay. Now, moving on to, we have an emcee. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add Resolution one oh one, one oh two twenty R, by majority consent to the agenda.
Second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Post motion passes. Uh, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I asked for this resolution, um, because, as, uh, I explained in the caucus.
Well, Mr. Ballard, can you, you have to introduce.
Oh, I apologize.
No problem.
I asked for the introduction of zero one zero dot zero, I'm sorry, dot one zero two, dot two zero R to be introduced and passed.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council imploring Albany County Board of Elections to take immediate action to change the location of the current polling site for election districts eleven dash two, twelve dash seven, and twelve dash eight.
Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, as you all were from the caucus conversation, um, these three districts were moved to a, uh, voting site that is outside the city line. Uh, it's not just outside the city line, but it creates a dangerous situation for individuals who want to walk to the polls. It makes it so that our seniors and our most vulnerable residents are forced to walk through Everett Road, walk over the bridge, walk through two heavily used intersections for the entrance and the exits of, uh, ninety east and ninety west, and then walk to Colony to be able to cast their votes. This election, as we know, is a, is one that has divided our country. It's one that has individuals feeling like their vote is being suppressed. It's one where there's been actions by other states and other municipalities so that certain communities have a difficult time. By no means am I saying that's what our election committee has done. By no means am I saying that they had any ill intention for this action. But this action does cause harm to our community. This action does create an additional barrier to our residents, to our seniors, to our individuals that have mobility issues as well as who are disabled. So we are asking the board to take an action, an action to correct this error. And it's an error. Again, by no means am I saying that it was done with any intent, but we do want them to take an intensive action to correct this. We have found two additional locations that are walkable for our residents that are closer to, to their homes, that are, is in our city lines. So we have had conversations with the Board of Elections. We hope to continue to have conversations with the Board of Elections. But I think it's important for us as a city council to not just tell the Board of Elections that we think this is the wrong location, but to also tell our residents that we stand with them and that when barriers are put up for them to be able to do their civil rights, their rights as American citizens, we won't stand by. We won't look past, and we will stand with them publicly. So I thank you for those who are in support of this. I thank all of you, to be honest, because any one of you could have stopped this from being brought up, uh, for a vote. So the fact that you were willing to let it come up to a vote, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard, any further, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I'm, uh, very familiar with, uh, uh, two election districts as they belong in the twelfth ward. And I agree with Alfredo. I don't think there was any malicious intent by the Board of Elections. Uh, it just happens that the school where these elections were, uh, held at the last, uh, time, uh, couldn't do it because they needed the space because of COVID restrictions on spacing their students. But nevertheless, I do believe that the Board of Elections has given enough time to change it and didn't seem to be willing, even though, uh, they were, uh, made aware that they had to look for another place back in September. And even though the suggestions of the alternative in Albany closer polling sites were given to them, I quite frankly don't know why. I think it's a bit of inertia that they just felt that they were too busy or whatever. But I think it's a very important statement for us to do, and I think it will be appreciated by a lot of voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. See no further discussion? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Nani.
President, I mean, yes.
Ballerin. Conti.
Uh, yes, I'm co-sponsor.
Doschett. Yes, co-sponsor please. Behe.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ends for resolutions reduced. Mr. Kimbrough.
Rest of the, thank you, Mr. President. Rest of the resolutions on the agenda for help.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kimbrough.
If there.
Ms. Love.
So I just want to make you guys aware, Councilmember Robinson, I already know. I don't know if Sonia is aware. There was a couple shootings as we were sitting here on Zoom for council.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Love. Mr. Anani.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Q M?
Always.
I appreciate it. Damn, I shouldn't have. Um, I just want to bring the attention of the gun violence that we are witnessing in our city. Um, yesterday around one o'clock, there was a, one AM, there was a shooting, uh, in the tenth ward on Hamilton, Ontario. Uh, a shooting that took place right on, uh, Hamilton, Ontario. Uh, fortunately, there were no deaths. And the individual, the perpetrator who was involved with the shooting is currently in custody, uh, thanks to the great police work that was done. This is just another addition to the unprecedented number of people who have been shot in the City of Albany. What's even more worrisome is that these incidents seem to be spreading across the city. My constituents, and I'm pretty sure many of your constituents, are increasingly coming to you guys worried about their safety, their kids, and the safety about, of the people in our streets. As a result of this unprecedented shooting, I think we're looking at a time to call for a state of emergency in the City of Albany to prioritize whatever resources are available to address the frequent violence that is occurring in our streets. So I'm calling on the county, the state, whatever additional resources that are out there, law enforcement resources, whether it's federal. It doesn't, I think we need to make sure that we have, everyone have a right to safe streets. And whatever resources that is available need to be deployed in the City of Albany to combat this gang violence, this street violence that we are seeing. This is unacceptable. And I know that there are people who are not acting with a sense of emergency because it's not in their neighborhood. But I'm telling you this, it looks like this is just the beginning. And I know there are individuals who look at issues like this as just an incident, is, uh, isolated. But it's time for everyone in this city, particularly elected officials and every resident, elected officials and stakeholders and leaders, to take this violence seriously. It could be your family in those neighborhoods. It could be a relative. It could be a friend. It could be a neighbor that could lose their life to this tragic violence that we are seeing. People could blame it on the pandemic. They could blame it on poverty. They could blame it on everything. But it's time for elected officials in this city to take leadership. It is unacceptable what is happening in this city as relates to the violence that we are seeing. This neighborhood, and as well as other neighborhoods in the City of Albany, should not have to accept a weekly, a weekly, or a daily shooting incident as a norm. Even sometimes when there are shootings, the news are not even reporting it anymore. We had communication with the police chief that after shootings, he would contact council members. That's not even happening anymore because it is happening too frequent. Friends, council members, it's time to call emergency when we see one. We shouldn't wait for another violence, another shooting, another gun victim. The time is now. And what we're seeing, whether you live in the Hill of the Burg or you live in Pine Hills, Arbor Hill, this is becoming a City of Albany problem. This is no longer a South and West of Arbor Hill problem. This is a City of Albany problem. And I could tell you this, if this amount of violence was happening in our affluent neighborhoods in the City of Albany, this would not be an incident. This will be a crisis, and we need to treat it as such. There are too many young people losing their life to gun violence in our city. How many more do we have to wait for? And today, I'm listening to the sheriff during budget saying he is waiting for, uh, for the City of Albany to accept invitation to come in, or he's waiting for response from the chief to come into the city. Well, Sheriff Apple, we need your help. We don't, there's, this is the ask from a council member. We don't need a sheriff and a police officer, Albany police officer, all in one vehicle. They could go in separate vehicle and police and patrol our neighborhoods. This is becoming a serious concern. And you don't need permission. We don't, if, if, you don't need permission from Albany Police Department to patrol our neighborhoods. The City of Albany is in the county. And to our governor and our state representatives, it's time to speak up and ask for whatever resources that are available into the City of Albany. To our federal representatives, Congressman Paul Tonko, Senator Jelabre, Chuck Schumer, we have a crisis in the City of Albany with this gun violence. This is no longer an incident that is happening in impoverished communities. This is a City of Albany. This, we are in a crisis. We are in a state of emergency in the City of Albany. We cannot sit idle and hope that things will change. It's time to take action. And there are some people that might say, well, we don't want police in our neighborhood. It's too much policing. Well, you lost that privilege when we seen all those shootings. And to the families out there, if you know individuals who are committing these acts of violence, please reach out to law enforcement, reach out to your leaders in the community. We cannot act like this is the norm. It's not the norm. This is not, this is, this should not be this way. We have kids losing their lives, eleven-year-olds being shot in the City of Albany, fifteen-year-olds with guns shooting up the city. We are the capital of New York. It should not be this way. We cannot accept this as the norm. And I think about the violence that just recently occurred in the tenth ward. I could have been out in those, in those streets at that time, similar to anyone else. We cannot just read these news clippers. We cannot read these tweets about shootings that are occurring and do nothing. It's time to put resources to combat the gun violence that has existed in this city. If this was occurring in an affluent neighborhood, it would have been national attention. Let this happen in Bethlehem. Let this happen in any other town or village. It is time to act. We cannot accept the gun violence as the way it should be. It doesn't matter what neighborhood it's happening in. All the elected officials should come together and address this.
Thank you, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mrs. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thanks, uh, Councilmember Love for, uh, initially bringing up the conversation just to provide more context. Um, while we met, there were two shootings down at the intersection of Mount Hope Drive and South Pearl Street, uh, right near Ezra Prentice Homes, uh, during the meeting. Councilmember Johnson and I were texting back and forth about the occurrence. Um, the reality is, this is six people shot within forty hours within our city. Um, quite unbelievable, um, heartbreaking, to say the least. And completely agree, we need resources out there. We need the sheriff's resources. We need people to address this issue because clearly this is just continuing to occur. Um, a couple months back, we had a similar two-day span where there was a lot of shootings. We thought it was a one-off instance. Now we're here, and this is occurring again. So, um, it doesn't seem like progress is being made, and I agree, we need additional resources here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, um, uh, thank you to any colleague that spoke on the gun violence. Um, you know, um, You know, someone got shot maybe 100 feet from my apartment over the weekend. It's sad that this is becoming the norm, our new norm. You know, I'm from Albany, New York, and we never had this type of violence in our city. I work, you know, maybe 1,000 feet from my apartment, and I just watch the things that our kids have to look at to and from school. And, you know, this is a reflection of what our city has become. And I agree that we need to exhaust all resources to address this violence because it's not going away. And and when I say resources, I mean resources in trying to deal with the the trauma and pain that people are dealing with at the moment. So I just want to say it's important that we have these conversations because this is what's, you know, what's actually going on in our community. And people need to know that the elected officials feel some type of way about the negative curve that gun gun violence has taken in and 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 the effects that it's having on people. So I just wanted to say that it's refreshing that someone spoke up about what is actually going on in our streets, and something needs to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would concur with my fellow colleagues that more resources are needed in our communities. As many of you know, West Hill and Arbor Hill have been hotspots for some time, dealing with gun violence. And I've gave many speeches on how the gun violence is impacting our communities. And the reason why I'm saying that more resources are needed because a couple of weeks ago I talked to a mother of a young man shot in my district, and she asked me why weren't more police there? And I answered her question to say that we often get told to answer that we are down officers, that there's not enough resources. And the crazy thing is that the day before, in that area, there was a shootout. And the next day, there was another shooting, and the young man was killed. And so our APD need help, needs help. They need the resources because innocent people are getting injured. And again, it won't be long before it's either one of us on this council, any one of our neighbors, or any one of our children. So I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I like to say this before we end tonight. Mr. Nani, we appreciate your words. We appreciate everyone's words that has been spoken. This is not something this council has not addressed in the past few months. This is not something that council members have not spoken eloquently about. Council members continuously speak about the resources to have more police officers. Council members have continuously spoke about having, giving suggestions on how they would like certain police officers to be policing their neighborhoods. We've met with the chief. I've asked this question. I've asked this question about why, you know, I've called on the sheriff, the state troopers to be in this city, and those calls seem to not be answered. We were told when Councilmember Robinson asked the chief, why can't we station officers at certain locations? The chief balked off that idea, said he did not think it was a good idea. I've called, we've asked, why can't the sheriff patrol the city? Why do they need to be with Albany officers? The chief said, well, they don't know the city, which I disagree. So, Mr. Nani, even though I see that you're passionate, you forget that this council as a whole, many council members, black and white, have taken a stand about the gun violence in our city. These council members on this council have said, we need answers. I've heard council members and myself included said, you want to end this? We have to start arresting people. We have to start, we have to stop acting like we don't have a gang problem. This is just not individuals who are having bad disagreements. You have to call it what it is. These are retaliation, violence, gang members, whatever. This is just not a city where people are having disagreements lasting this long. And I like to, I have to say it because this council, we've talked about it, council members expressed their frustration. Council members expressed frustration with how this city has not been policed correctly. And we've had officers come on and talk to us about how they feel sometimes their hands are tied. So when we look at the situation that we are in, and we have, you know, a lot of community input about how we should police the city, we have a lot of people have different opinions and but we must stand on the side of, every neighborhood right now feels the effect of this gun violence. Every business owner in this city feels the effect of this gun violence. Everyone, Mr. Nani pointed out earlier this evening that our city, more people are developing and moving to the city. Not if this continues, they won't. Not if we, as a, as a department, a police department, have not shown that we've done everything possible. We've used every resource possible to stem this, and we haven't because we heard from the chief. We've heard what he said, how he views policing. We've heard the chief say, Albany County sheriffs don't know the city of Albany, which I disagree. Every, I said it months ago, every hand should be on deck, and if there's not, we need to know why. This is just, this is a microcosm of what we continue to see as council members when we try to hold this administration accountable, down from the planning, down from when we appoint people, appointments are overdue. This is what we've seen when we're trying to represent our neighborhoods. That's why Mr. Howie, ordinance had to be redone and redone over and over again. I do applaud you, council members, for doing your job, but we need leadership. We're doing what we can do, but the chief needs to come up with better answers than people don't know the city of, these officers don't know the city of Albany. And we need to see a plan on how this chief is going to tackle this. Mr. Howie had his hand up, and then Ms. Fahy.
Yeah, and I did have my hand up first, actually, and I wish I would have had a chance then because this gun violence is very important, and I think I brought it up all along. I'd like to see state police doing traffic stops. There's no reason, and they're speeding. I've been down in Woodlawn with Judy, and I had a car go by at 50 miles an hour. I find myself screaming at these cars. But the reason I want to talk at the end here is during my ordinance, one of the council members brought up that people should not get together and decide how they want their neighborhoods to be, and I disagree with that. We just passed a resolution on free speech. Why can't I and members of my community decide what we want to see? I came up here from Queens. I'm not born and bred in Albany. My son is. But when I grew up in Queens, we used to be able to play ball in empty lots. We used to be able to play war and stuff like that in woods. I go down there now, and there's just big apartment buildings. I moved to Albany because it reminded me of where I grew up, a nice suburban urban area. I don't want to make this another New York City. I think we should be self-sufficient. We shouldn't have to depend on growth, abnormal growth, in order to make our, pay our taxes and get by. We see it right now. My son cannot go to school, not because of COVID. He's learning from home because the school district doesn't have enough money. Why don't they have enough money? We've given out IDAs to large buildings and, you know, department developments. Yet we have to provide services for them, increased services. We have to have, if they have children, increased children in our schools, but yet they pay the same taxes what the building was there before. I'm not against development. I've said this all along, smart, slow development. I don't want every lot in Albany to be gone when my son Max grows up, and maybe he has kids, that they can't run around and play, or there's other areas to grow. So I just want to defend the people in my neighborhood who got together and formed an alliance and came down to the council and talked to everybody. This is what they'd like to see. There's room for everything. We need to be able to get along. If we can all get along, I think that goes a long way. But we also need the resources, and I hear, I mean, and I'll do anything to stop this violence. I'll go down to the neighborhoods. I'll talk to people. I did during the police standoff, and I got tear gas. I wanted to go down because I believe Albany is a great city. This is, you know, Albany is, we need to make it great again. And that's a terrible thing because somebody else said that. But Albany needs to develop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond about the gun violence to Councilmember Nani, who I think he's here. I, you know, there's not one person on this council who is extremely upset about what's been going on in our community. We share, you know, what you felt, what any, anybody, any of the other council members and their, and the residents in their wards have been feeling. And it's tremendously frustrating to know how to address it. I mean, I know what I would do if there was an incident in my ward. You know, there'd be community meeting after community meeting, hammer, 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 what happened? You know, get the details, get the details, and and address it, address it, address it. And that's got to happen every single time, you know, one of these incidents happens. But I also agree, you know, we, if we need more resources, let's bring that chief back in again. Let's ask that mayor to come back in again and have a conversation. You know, what are we going to do? I wouldn't stand for it, honestly, you know, and it is affecting every single person who lives in this city. So, you know, if we sit here, maybe not comment, please. Whereas we are extremely upset about every single incident in this city, and don't understand it. Don't understand how it, how it can be allowed to continue. So we're with you on it. Let's get the chief back in. If we need more resources, let's do it. But every single person in the community has got to stand up against it. That's, you know, the other thing. I, you know, was it a drive-by shooting tonight? I don't know. Was it from a house? You know, we've got, you've got to get the details, and you, and you just got to hammer away on it. And then, you know, as you all know, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and, you know, our police staff will address it if the pressure is put on. I mean, it's a problem. We're understaffed, yes. So what do we do? Let's, let's bring them in again to a caucus. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Seeing all the comments, Mr. Kimbrough?
Oh, can I say something?
Oh, go ahead, Jack. Yeah.
I just wanted to say, send our condolences to the Albany Fire Department, who lost another member unexpectedly, so.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you so much for that recognition.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll work on getting the chief into our next caucus because it, again, this flaring up again and this violence is unacceptable. With that being said, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Being adjourned. Thank you, Council.